And... 6:31. Okay, let's call the meeting to order at 6:31. Roll call trustee Snowman here. Trustee Grum here. Trustee Rogers here. Please all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, you want to jump in on the reappointment?
Right. The first order of business, we confirmed trustee Snowman was reappointed by the Lee County Board at its meeting on May 8th, Tuesday, May 8th. So the first item of action would be to administer the oath of office to trustee Snowman. I'll give you something to read. We're not going to test your memory.
Okay. That would be sort of...
Yeah. So raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Carl Snowman.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
Or affirm...
Or affirm...
That I will support the constitutional laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The constitutional laws of the state of Illinois.
The constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
That I will become familiar with...
That I will become familiar with...
And obey the policies, rules, and regulations...
And obey the policies, rules, and regulations...
Of the Rockland Fire Protection District.
Of the Rockland Fire Protection District.
And that I will faithfully serve...
And that I will faithfully serve...
The Rockland Fire Protection District.
The Rockland Fire Protection District.
And the discharge of my duties...
And the discharge of my duties.
As a trustee to the best of my knowledge and ability.
As a trustee to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.
That is, this is actually historical. I am the last trustee that will be appointed to this.
Oh.
You all get to do it next time.
Do you want to sign this now or after? Okay, let's do two. Our is on trial, though, rise and order. Is it on some... Well, I use... There's just one.
Okay.
Okay. That being done, the Fire Protection District requires that any time you have a new trustee seated or reseated, we have to elect officers, president, secretary, and treasurer. It would be appropriate to have the election of officers at this time. You could do it individually, or you could do it as a slave. However you prefer.
I'm going to make a motion to renominate the slave as his...
Make the motion to reappoint the slave as his...
You, did you second Carl?
Yeah, I seconded it. Roll call vote, trustee Snowman.
Aye.
Trustee Grum.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers, aye. Consideration of minutes of the Rockland Fire Protection District trustees for April 9, 2018, and release of closed session minutes for the special meeting of January 25, 2018. Motion to approve. Motion by Grum, second. Not being present, I'm going to have to stay. Okay. Second by Rogers. You want a roll call? No, just that's a voice vote, right?
Yeah, this could be a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
And abstaining is trustee Snowman, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Consideration of the minutes of the special meeting of Rockland Fire Protection District, Board of Trustees for May 8th and May 10th. Motion to approve. So move. Motion by Grum.
Do you want copies?
Second by Snowman.
I got copies of all this if you need them.
For the file.
Are you sure?
That's a file, isn't it? Motion by Grum, second by Snowman.
There's one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on, you're getting ahead of me here.
Okay.
Two. I used to tell him, trustee Grum, I said, you know, it's a bad day when an attorney has more than the linear inch of paper. Okay.
Please, motion, second, and...
Who needed...
Motion by Grum, second by Snowman. All ayes. On number six.
Got it. Good.
Chief's report.
Chief Arnold was working at Lake Forest.
Okay.
He had nothing for me to relate to.
Okay. Board have anything for the chief? Hearing none. Public comment, district allows for those individuals who would like the opportunity to address the fire district on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each person addressing the trustees is asked to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Ms. Thistle?
Do you want my name and address?
If you'd like.
No, what do you need?
Just name. Is that what you want, Brian?
Right.
Know me, Brian? Okay. This is for trustee Grum. Mis pertaining to last Thursday night's meeting in Lake Forest. I don't know what you were thinking of when you made the statement, and I say I wrote it down, so I get it right. I don't want to say the wrong thing. You said regarding emotions were high because of rumors. Don't, I would have liked to have known what the rumors were, but... And you also said that the people, some of the people were emotionally connected to some of the firemen. Okay. While you were a firefighter in Lake Forest, two of your sons were here on the Millwood Fire Department, correct? That's an emotional, there was nothing wrong with that, was there?
If I had been allowed to finish my statement that night, I made the statement that people were emotionally attached to the fire department, or firemen, as well as the fire department.
Okay.
And I would have followed that with, I certainly understand that.
Oh, okay.
Having been a fireman, having spent 28 years of my life as a fireman...
Right.
I can understand that emotional attachment.
Because two of your boys were here.
Exactly.
Right. And one of them went on to be a very fine police officer...
Yes.
In Lake Forest. Yes. You know, this is me. Libertyville and Lake Forest are only interested in us for the money, okay? And I would like you guys to go over their proposal once you get the numbers. Look at them really good, you know? And do the right thing, go with the people in the sanctuary, the people in Millwood, and vote for Lake Four, Lake Bluff, I'm sorry. I mean Lake Bluff. You know, because one of these days...
Catch you on the clock.
Are you kidding me?
You told me to catch you.
I'm going to check. Oh, I've got five seconds?
Yep.
Anyhow. You know, just do the right thing. People will pat you on the back and say thank you so much when it's all over.
Okay, it's just a quick follow-up before we go any further. Reminder to both trustees, this is public comment. Yes, sir, Mr. Brown.
I have prepared a statement, David Brown, Sanctuary. Tonight I share with you some of the most recognized words in the English language in the preamble of our country's Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, and that among that, among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the government. There's a lot that goes after this, but I'm certainly not seeing consent around here on the fire consolidation topic, as it openly appears that local governing bodies may be considering to dictate and infringe upon their citizens' rights in treating the Constitution as a historical relic to be overlooked instead of wholly respecting it as the cornerstone basis of their rights to govern. You see, many people have forgotten that you sometimes need to be prepared to fight and defend your rights in order to keep them. That is the difference between a right and a privilege. Privileges are granted, but rights are defended. Judge Richard Posner of the Seventh Circuit wrote that the Constitution is a charter of negative rather than positive liberties. The men who wrote the Bill of Rights were not concerned that government might do too little for the people, but that it might do too much to them. The Fourteenth Amendment adopted in 1868 sought to protect Americans from oppression by state government, not to secure them basic governmental services. Therefore, the Constitution is unquestionably negative. Instead, it is and always was a restraint upon all government to ensure our liberty. Most importantly, we cannot pick and choose our way of any constitutional rights, for that would be constructively amending the Constitution. We all know Millwood is an unincorporated place on the map. That means that the dreams it's made of are as real as it being a town. However, our rights are real, and to be defended no matter what anybody says, for without consent, there can only be a big problem. If necessary, we need to be prepared to apply the Constitution as a negative restraint upon government as it was intended, as we have no liberty until that is restored. I leave you with the fresh shortened words of Oprah Winfrey. Use this moment of your life and work through all the divisiveness and injustices. Take what you've learned and unite. Make the choice every day to exemplify honesty, because the truth exonerates and it convicts, disinfects and it galvanizes. The truth has always been and will always be our shield against corruption, our shield against greed and despair. The truth is our saving grace. And not only are you here to tell it, to write it, to proclaim it, to speak it, but to be it. Be the truth.
You done?
I thank you for listening.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, sir.
I know everybody wants to be proactive these days. My question is for Carl. First of all, congratulations on your reappointment. I'm only asking you because I think you've been here longer than the other two gentlemen. Before any of this came about, was there a big uproar where people protesting, bringing in their tax bills, saying I pay way too much to the fire department?
Will you allow me to answer?
It's up to you. That's my knowledge.
There were nobody, no tickets outside or anything? So, not a lot of people, I mean, that's all. Thanks, that's all I wanted to know.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pfeithaus.
Thank you. Al Pfeithaus. Couple of observations, I guess, from the last two meetings. One is that, and be a little bit repetitive here, I apologize. It would be very good if as much of the proposals as legal to be shared were shared on websites, not just one-on-one, when somebody calls you and asks a question. And I think it would be very good if your criteria for making a decision and your evaluations of proposals and your reasoning for whatever your final decision is were shared openly for all on the website. I think that would be an excellent thing to do on behalf of the entire community. The other observation, and I've only lived here 33 years, not as long as at least two of the three of you have. In my memory, there haven't been too many times when our neighboring communities have wanted Millwood as much as these two proposals appear to want Millwood. You know, I heard it in their presentations, I felt some emotion in their presentations, particularly Lake Bluff, which surprised me. Personal opinion there. But that tells me that we've got a little bit of negotiating room since they've watched us. So I would suggest that you be cognizant of that and use that negotiating power that we appear to have, because our business is highly desired by these two proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Only once, twice, three times? Okay, attorney's report. Brian, you're up.
Just one thing here. For the month of April, firm billed 5.2 hours on FOIA-related issues. The total of fees for that was $1,170. The total for all FOIA fees is now $8,172.
At least, could have done a lot with that in April.
But that's it. You know, that's not, let me, there's two laws, just so you're aware of. The secondary employment law that we talked about, Senate Bill 1335, that has not advanced in the Senate. At this point, normally, that would suggest that it's not going to advance in the Senate, which is what Senator Bush told the President, Chief Christian, who's the President of the IFC. So perhaps that's good news. There's another bill that's gone out just a year about it. It has to do with pension funds and part of the pension of funds, but you don't have one, so that's not going to apply. But that secondary employment bill was a big deal, but nothing's ever dead in law. These are like vampires, they can come back anytime. But at least at this point, it doesn't look like it's going to go forward.
I have noticed that a number of fire departments in Lake County have instituted one.
Oh, yeah. And in fact, Gurney just included it in their collective bargaining agreement. It's a position...
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of them. What are they, a secondary?
Secondary employment.
Right.
The bill, the position that's taken by the AFFI, Associated Firefighters International, is if you have a firefighter working at full-time at Department A...
So in this case, it was Gurney.
Correct.
Okay.
And that same firefighter works, as often as, part-time with Department B.
Here.
Like here. Lake Forest and here, right? If this bill passed or with these provisions that are in some collective bargaining agreement, the bill says if you have that situation, employer B has to pay Pension Fund A 17.5% of that person's salary. In addition to that, employer A has to withhold 9.455% of that salary and pay that to the Pension Fund without any benefit of any creditable service for it, which never struck me as being fair, but it is what it is.
Does this seem to be a trend from the full-time departments?
It's an initiative that we've seen being championed by at least the AFFI. I don't know about anybody else. Those are the ones that kind of in the area that I deal with.
Okay.
A lot, a lot of municipalities and districts don't want that, and in fact, in what, in northwestern, central, and southern Illinois, it'll absolutely kill them. It'll just kill them, and I don't know, I don't know what they'll do, which is one of the reasons I think the Senate bill isn't going to... But, so that's the two things, so just the amounts in the bill.
Okay, when we were at both the meetings with you and John Modulinski, I asked that if, after the meeting, over the next 30 days, if the two of you have time to go through the two proposals and give me your kind of unbiased, oh, okay. Am I ahead of myself?
I'm just going to do it under the discussion of the proposals because...
All right, let's do it then. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move ahead. Do that. Okay, treasurer's report, Madam Treasurer.
All right. Currently, in Lake Forest Bank and Trust Capital, $36,385.32. Lake Forest Bank and Trust checking, $3,134.34. Lake Forest Bank and Trust Reserve, $274,032.12. Petty cash, $29,050 for April 2018. And the budget for the year, our fiscal year is over, we came in under budget by $85,000. We have, we'll have a $2,000 adjustment I have to put in here, I need to get the final dollar figure for an invoice for capital, so we'll be up about $87,000. So $2,000 in our favor.
On the revenue side, we were $5,000 short because North Shore Tiger wasn't paid up, so if you want to mention that to Chief Harold. Obviously, that won't hit this budget here, but they did agree, we have a contract with them, that pays $5,000 a year.
And also Chief Harold will need to start working with us for the next budget.
Right. Right, because we have to pass the budget in July, which means we have to present it at June meeting preliminary, since this is maybe we have to get going. So mention to John, Mike, that if John would like to have a budget meeting to let me know, and we'll call a special meeting to work on the budget, just a budget workshop, budget workshop. Give us a backup, you guys should shoot an email. I'm glad it'd be good. Okay, you... Okay, can I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report? So move. Second. Motion made by Snow, or by Grum, seconded by Snowman. Roll call vote, trustee Snowman.
Aye.
Trustee Grum.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers, aye. Rule of the outstanding invoices.
We have staffing, taxes, and fees, $2,900. Staffing wages, $5,300. Payroll, $222, $222, $1,078, $950. But 57, 371, 222. People loan payments, $7,500. TES, $305. Roots, garbage, $93. Fireman gas, $679. North Shore gas, $741. North Shore water, $8481. Moirst, $952. Truck repair, $9632. Trustee compensations. We have Wexfleet Fuel, Postmaster, that was for the postcards for the 203. American Gas is $2450. ComEd, $793. Griffin Johnson did the BLS provider cards, $4250. Lake County Public Works, $7683. North Shore Water Reclamation, $57. Henry Shine, $7985. Mother Henry Shine, $381. Performance mailing and printing, that is the actual postcards for 23736. Comcast, $1904. City Card, $5963. Bernie's Towing for the incident in October, 5/12/5.
Is that recoverable off of this? Okay.
Yeah.
So that's going to go on.
Five alarm fire and safety, I remember the turnout gear, $7,009, but we're getting the credit and updated invoice probably in the next week, so we'll adjust that. So about $2,000 in our favor. Mabes Division, $5,900. Emergency medical, $338. Rager, a toggle switch for 1828. This one is incorrect. Team Athletics, it's actually the T-shirts for $486. I have a smaller one for May, which is the house. And Joseph McKay for EMT certification, $800.
Okay, and the breakdown on the city cards bill is on the following page. Has shown any questions on any of the above? Trustee Snowman, trustee Grum. May I have a motion to approve the outstanding invoices as presented by treasurer for Brian?
I'll send it.
Second. Motion by Grum, trust, Snowman, second by Grum. Roll call vote, trustee Snowman.
Aye.
Trustee Grum.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers, aye. Okay, discussion accident on Lake Bluff and Lake Forest Libertyville proposals.
So here's, earlier in the meeting, you approved the minutes from the special meetings on May 8th and May 10th, so they're here. Per your request, we spent a little time in an memorandum. This is just, there's a copy, there's three of them here.
You got one more case, Mike, too?
I've got, I've got excerpts here.
I'm going like this and taking...
So this is, I, the first one I mailed out had a caveat on it because I wasn't, one, I wasn't sure where we're going with this, so it has the caveat that says, "Privilege and confidential legal assessment." And two, it was still a draft, like I said, I wasn't sure where we're going. Once we completed and I checked with, I ran this by both John Kelly and John Modulinski, one, just to make sure it's accurate, because you know, sometimes you miss something. But two, John Modulinski was in agreement that it was, it was consistent with our discussions, just like the minutes, and John Kelly backed the memorandum in his riff for the public's information. And you heard on the, on the meeting on Thursday, President Rogers asked to spare a memorandum outlining our assessment, you know, good, bad, or indifferent of the two proposals. And that's what this memorandum does, outlines our assessment. Goes through a couple...
Is this something, once we're done, that can be put on the website?
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's make this available to Millwood neighbors. Would you like to post that on the website?
Well, I've got a couple copies here, too.
We'll put it on. And the fire, that's where I was going.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do both. Can someone, I guess, can you email it? But I'd rather have you email the file to me so I can post it as a PDA, if that's possible.
I can do it. Yeah, I was going to say.
Do you ever email?
I won't be back to my office till Thursday, because I'm all over.
Trustee Snowman says he should be able to email it to us.
Okay. Anyway, I'll just kind of give you the highlights. The first, the first point I addressed was the authority in the background. We had a lot of comments that the board doesn't have authority, the board does have authority. The Fire Protection District, yeah, squarely places the authority with the board trustees. So I just reviewed that briefly. Second, I raised the issue, and I think it was mentioned in a couple meetings, about IDOT and road access. I looked on the website, IDOT, IDOT states that the problem, the, the plans for the intersection were designed to address the restoration of vehicle, vehicular access between the two roads, but they identified the timeframe of the project as being April 15th of 2013 to December 31st of 2015. Five zero.
Five zero.
So that's a little bit of a window.
A little bit.
Which I think was the basis for the comment of, it's there, but who knows when it's going to happen.
Exactly.
The problem is, and the second paragraph, I just note, when this first came up back in 2013, I know they worked, went to the IDOT officials and said, the plan at the time, if those plans are still followed through, envisioned taking of the land, this access road here in front of us, Washington, will go, and about half of the apron will go. I don't know a lot of fire stations that are really successful when you're landlocked, so there's issues. And at that point, they told IDOT, before you start this craziness, we need an operational facility. You've got the vehicles, you've got the people, you've got the equipment. What you need to do is, you can't shut this facility down until you have enough public safety support. And there's, that's still being worked through. And like I said, with the projected end date of 2050, God knows if we'll ever get there, but, but that's a major concern, you know, because that could be, if they decided next week they were going to do this, you know, the ball's, the game's put. The third thing I put in here were the current district boundaries. Boundaries change. You know, municipalities and its boundaries change, so what, what these propose now and what it could be two years from now, who knows? I just note that the proposal summary and highlights are in the minutes, because I didn't want to regurgitate a stack of information. Each of the sets of minutes has the minutes of what happened at the meeting, it has the presentation by each entity, a copy of the presentation by each entity, and a copy of the proposal by each entity. So it's as complete as the information that we have. Then I go into the discussion of the options, and I identified three options. First, option one is maintain the status quo. And I kind of review what the status quo was. Think after Lake Bluff, they gave me the response time, so I put that in there, because I think that's, that's a big point. And then I go over the advantages and disadvantages of option one. Option two, and I just titled it, "Agree to a joint combined provision of services with the Village of Lake Bluff." And I use the same thing. Here's the response times, here's some good points, a summary of what the proposal is, key points of the proposal, here's the response times that they have, advantages and disadvantages. Then I go to option three, "Contract for services with the Village of Libertyville and the City of Lake Forest." We go through a brief recitation of what the points are. I list the response times for Libertyville's three and Lake Forest's two stations, and then I go through advantages and disadvantages of each. At the end, we conclude with the assessment, and in the assessment, and I'll just tell you, the assessment essentially says, option one, maintaining a status quo or a variation thereof... thereof, perhaps officers offers the most optimal option for board consideration. And just, the thought behind this variation thereof is the ambulance thing. I see ambulance services run by districts. Ambulance services are a big expense, and I have districts where I've told them, don't do your own, contract for it. To outfit an ambulance is about $280,000. Just to get, to get the ambulance with the striker, cotton, the load, and the equipment, and, $280,000. And then you get to do that every five or eight years. That's a lot of money, and you're not over, like I have some districts that are doing okay, because of the property they have and the tax base, you're not in that same category. So that's a concern I had about ambulance, and when I said, you know, perhaps that, that portion of the Lake Bluff thing is, is worth further research and pursuit, but that's not my decision, that's for the gang of three. But I wanted to put that in there, because, and I say, option three is the least optimal, and I say, I looked at three different criteria for each, which is what they said at the meetings, what was the cost involved, what was the response time, and what was the sustainability? And I looked at those. So option three, I said was the least optimal. Option two, I said, option two, Lake Bluff, was better than the Libertyville-Lake Forest, but I still have some reservations and concerns, and they're listed in here. And then I just say, option one is perhaps slightly better, or on par with option two, but it's certainly better than option three. And I go through the same things, why I think. Like I said, once I got done with this, this was my Saturday magnum opus, I got to deal with this, and once I finished it after some good amount of time, I wanted to run it by John Kelly, because if I'd only been doing this for 14 years, John has been doing it for 24 years, and it's always nice to have a second set of eyes look at something. And John agreed, which is why I emailed the trustees, because that's fair.
All right.
So that's the memorandum.
It did gives us some good points to look at, and to work on as well.
Can I ask a question? Of you, Brian?
What's the board's pleasure camp? I mean, we can, I just talked about the memorandum.
I don't want to get into a big Q and A.
No, 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 it's a real, I just want to know, is, if the station closes, will the state of Illinois allow money to move it, or to, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Are they obligated to, or, I know they don't have any money, but, you know?
Yeah, right. And they're, with all the wealth that's laying around the Springfield, the law says that they have to, when they take property, there has to, just like with a private citizen, if the government takes money, they gotta give you property.
Right.
The law says they have to reimburse you. One of the other attorneys in our office does work for IDOT, and usually it's, you know, take a little bit of land for IDOT. And I stood, I've gone to him to court for just hearings on those, and IDOT's rules are, they call, they call in an appraiser, and they do the appraisal, and whatever the fair market value is, that's what by law, the law. My concern, and I mentioned this in 2013, what happened, if an appraiser comes in here, this is a fire station, fine, no, this is a commercial facility, it's a commercial property consisting of X number of square feet. X number of square feet, that's what it is. They don't care what it's used for. In my mind, that's, a fire station is not just a commercial facility, there's much more to it than that, which is why, when we first heard about this, I started getting excited, because you're gonna fight with the state over money. Even in 2013, they didn't have a lot of money, they're not in any better shape now. Should they give it to us? I think they should. On the other hand, I think we have to be reasonable in what you're asking for. One of the departments I don't work with, but we work with our firm, just built a new station for eight and a half million dollars. I don't think you could, I don't think you're gonna be getting the Taj Mahal. I, I think I'd be foolish even to think about that. What you need is a functional facility. I helped Lake Villa build this station on Route 59, that was four and a half of them. I think that's still a stretch of the state. That's not for me, that's something for.
Right, okay.
Them and the chiefs, because I can, I can tell you what I know of the requirements for a fire station from an attorney's perspective, but I'm not a fire guy, you know? I've seen it, but I'm not a fire guy, that's what they need to do. Why is it different? Well, it's not. So, yes, they should, the question is, how much blood can you get out of the turnout?
Right.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry, I know you didn't want to.
No, I tried to do the best we can, as long as it stays civil and reasonable, that's, we only want to make sure everybody gets their questions answered, please.
I'm not gonna curse you.
Not tonight.
If I remember correctly, IDOT has like a five-year plan and a 10-year plan. I believe that this project is not in the 10-year plan, do you happen to know?
I don't, and in fact, the last I heard was the same as what you said, it's not there. Strange things can happen.
To follow up on that, because I know there is some relationship through the county board, I've asked Commissioner Rommel if he can ask whomever he knows at IDOT, if there's any current update on times, on projects, on anything. I'm guessing the answer will be, no, there's no update, but at least we asked, so. Okay, thank you.
As long as we're on that number 12. After the meeting we had with Lake Bluff, I asked Drew Irvin to spell out the numbers on that proposal, so that we'd have a better breakdown of exactly where those numbers are coming from and what they're for, and he assured me he would do that. And certainly after the Lake Forest-Libertyville proposal, it was very clear to me that, that that whole issue is still up for negotiations, and to spell out exactly what it is that we expect, so that those numbers can be revised to a more accurate figure. So at this point, I would like to suggest that I, I follow up with Lake Bluff on those requests, and that President Rogers follow up with Lake Forest-Libertyville to pursue a more accurate understanding of exactly what that proposal needs to be.
Interesting on that as well, I got a call from Karani and Seabird both, and what Mr. Fifehouse has said earlier, I think there's, I think we're in a unique position, talking to both these departments to find out how much, I mean, you kind of paraphrase what we're worth, what kind of, I'm gonna say leverage, that we, we have to put something together with either or. So they've asked if I could, they've not given me a date, but they've asked if they could drill down on dollar amounts and discuss the meetings a little bit, so that's, I'm gonna say in the queue, but there's no date or time set, I'm waiting to hear from them. So I would as well like to, as we discussed, I guess, a little bit of a sidebar, we're talking to Chief Graff, kind of sort of after the meeting, I'm a little bit fuzzy on the amount of people needed to provide the full-time service and the cost thereof, so I think you probably have the best background on that. I have no objection to Bob meeting with Lake Bluff, and I would suggest as well, really that, I, I don't see that any one of the three of us is or isn't open to meet with any one of the other two communities. So I am gonna go ahead and meet if they actually contact me, but I certainly would encourage you to meet, if you have any further questions or whatever, with Drew and/or with Karani. It's unfortunate that we can't meet to do this.
I have sent a couple of emails to Drew on some specific questions.
Good, that's great.
And I will give you my, my personal view of Libertyville-Lake Forest, and that is, they went, going back over their proposal, they went into great detail as to how they priced it, in terms of the formula that they used, and it was kind of the classic approach that's been used by Lake Forest in the past, where they calculate out what, how much, on a percentage basis of the, of the service you're gonna use, and you pay that much of the budget, so they added their two budgets together, and they gave us 3.5 percent roughly, something like that, which came out to the $503,000. So that methodology is there. They've also been very, very clear, and I totally understand that, that they cannot charge us less than they charge their own people. So I don't see that there's going to be any movement on that. Now, they said, you know, that they would look at, is there any way to reduce it, but they also said very clearly that could only be done by reducing the expense. Well, the core services are the core services, and we cannot reduce that. Now, how much, if we choose not to take their fire prevention zero, those, I can do, knock a thousand dollars off, so I, it just feels to me that this is probably likely to turn out to be a waste of time, and that, that price is, that price based on that methodology.
Right, exactly what you said, Carol. I, I had that almost identical conversation, and I, and he said, well, it's based off of VAV, and I said, well, I don't think you can do this project off of VAV. And he said, why? I said, well, so you want the same money whether you answer 10 calls or 1,000 calls. And he said, the proposal, the way I think you should be looking at it, is the services you're gonna need to provide. If you look at the call history of this community, I think it's fairly stable in, in how many calls are to the Rockland Fire Protection District. I said, so your, your method of, of doing your numbers, I don't think works. And my comment to, actually to Bob Kylie, I said, well, I said, let me break it down for you for, for me. I said, now, I'm gonna use landscaper math. And he said, if you've got 200 calls, you guys are each gonna take half of it, that's 100 calls each. That means you're gonna answer one call additionally every third day each, in general. I mean, certainly not every third day there's going to be a call. I said, that, that just doesn't equate out to 520,000 hours. And that's when Seabird and Karani said, well, we'd really like to sit down and talk. I said, fine, we can sit down and talk, I'm just telling you, that the reality is, if you're dividing Knollwood, quote unquote, in half, in other words, you're each taking half of the responsibility, which is in essence what they're saying they're gonna do, you're each picking up the load of approximately 100 calls, again, using the round number of 200 calls, you can get more detail on as you want to go. I said, that's just not, that just doesn't make sense, so.
There's some other interesting things in the numbers that they, that they provided that I think are worth sharing right now. One is that, when you look at ours, our tax assessment, our tax burden is about $630,000. And roughly, you know, these are, these are rough numbers, probably, roughly 600 households, okay? Lake Forest is 6 million, 6,000 households, which means they're paying exactly the same per household as we're paying per household. Now, you would think, given that their houses, the value of their houses is much higher, you would think that would be, be different. And also too, economies of scale, you would think that, that given the way we operate and they operate, they should have economies of scale, so that they shouldn't, again, the cost per household shouldn't be, shouldn't be the same. But I think what really makes that up is their cost of labor versus our cost of labor is huge difference, huge difference. Libertyville, when you took a look at their, $8 million by their number of households, their, their cost per household was even higher, but I'm not sure that they were including, the budget covers the operation of the entire district, plus, plus the village, but when they did the households, I don't know if they included the district's households as well as, so that might bring that number back down again.
Right.
But I do think that's something to keep, you know, again, it's just, it's a good fact to know that, that it's almost exactly, Lake Forest is 10 times as big, but they pay the same per household as we do.
Well, we'll continue to gather facts, continue to do our very best to keep everybody informed, and I don't have anything else on that.
No, I, I think the fact that we, we are talking about these issues and discussing these, these things that concern us, I think leads me to believe that there is more discussion that has to occur.
I agree with that. Okay.
And I, I'm sure, certainly the meetings of the, you know, last, last week, the two meetings, one thing that really kept across was that, that, well, a lot of the people who were in attendance felt that the public was not getting the information they needed, and also the public didn't have a way to really give their opinion back to us that was affected. And we, I know that it came up about the, that proposal with the Citizens Committee and this, I think we need to really get some serious thought to addressing those concerns within the community. Certainly, we'll put all this information out on the website to make it available, but that's still, that's a one-way thing, but how do we, how can we let people get their opinions and have input into what we're doing, what they're considering? Because, because again, I would make the point, one thing that doesn't show up in, in, directly in Brian's evaluation, because this is a very fact-based one, is that there's a world of difference between the Lake Forest-Libertyville proposal and the Lake Bluff in terms of just the whole approach and the culture and everything. One is a pure outsourced people, right? And it shows, maybe it just, you just basically say, they're gonna provide all the service. The other is more to grow, you know, to partner with, with the neighboring community, and sort of do what you do today in a more efficient and effective way. They're very, very different ways of doing things, they're both valid. I mean, outsourcing is not here. Outsourcing does get a lot of problems on the table, I understand that, but it's also you give up a tremendous amount of control. And I think that's an issue that you really have to talk to the residents of the district about, their feeling, what they want their district to be. Is it just gonna be a paper tax collector that turns around and gives money to another entity, or is it going to be, again, where, where there's more local control?
Agreed, and to kind of, I guess, ramp it up a little bit, I try to stop and talk to people as I drive through the community, and some of them are completely unaware. Some of them would like some information, and some of them say, well, if I call 911, am I gonna get service? And I say, yeah, well, that's all I care about. I mean, some of them bring it down that simple. So you're right, there, there is soup to nuts levels of, of what people want, and as best we can, we'll, we'll continue to try to be responsive. We won't be successful to everybody, but we'll continue to try to post things and, and talk and listen and do the best we can.
Can I just interject one thing?
What is my saying?
I'll do it anyway. One of the comments I made on Thursday night, when you, when, I think Danny was talking about the Citizens Committee, a caution to everybody here is, it's a committee of the district, so it has to comply with the Open Meetings Act. One trustee present, three trustees present. No trustees present, you're still gonna have to have minutes, and, you know, you comply with the Open Meetings Act and everything that means, I mean, which isn't a bad thing necessarily, I mean, but, but just be, so you're all aware. You'll, you'll get the Open Meetings Act, not see it here.
Okay. Anything else? Can we move to 13 non-agenda items? Is, I'm not familiar with everybody, I don't see Lieutenant Beatty, is he? Can I talk to you after the meeting real briefly?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Nomination, resignation, determinations of members of the Knollwood Fire Department? Anything that you have to report?
No, sir.
Sure?
Yep.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn at 7:21 PM? All in favor? Close. This meeting is adjourned.